...our meeting to order. So Alicia and I here with Jack phoned in. Okay. First item on the agenda is our minutes. Christine's inform me she needs a little bit more time to compile those today, so we're gonna put that off.
Too busy playing Santa Claus.
Too busy to do that, so the top of our agenda will be item number two. And if you can't hear me or you need anything repeated, Jack, just let me know. Okay?
Okay, yeah, I will. That's it.
But we have Denton Butler and Roy Litchfield here from our building committee to give us an update on our two grant programs going on for downtown. So with that, Bud, you wanna take over? Item number two, grants update. Getting a lot of feedback there, Jack. You okay?
Sound good.
Bud has given us a briefing document on background of the block.
That's gonna work out real well.
Is he driving?
This may be a little repetition, I think, especially for you being, obviously, and maybe somewhat for Alicia having come from the Board of Finance, but for Jack's benefit, who probably can't hear any of this, I wanted to start with just the serving members on the block are, of course, Mike Kazani, Ken Kroner, Roy Litchfield to my right, and of course myself.
Okay, guys, thank you.
We were commissioned in our role by the Board of Selectment on November 3rd, 2009.
I do. You get a lot of feedback, though. No problem. Carry on.
The first project that we received, of course, our first charter was the sewer plant expansion. And I would refer those people who aren't familiar with the progress reports that we did to go to the archives, and you can look at reports one through 12, which basically summarize all the events and activities over the 18 months from the sewer plant construction. The bottom line to that is that we had an early finish by approximately five months, and that we were under budget by 905,000, resulting in a $452,000 cash-on-hand balance. And the reason that that sounds a little bit like funny money is because it's grant money, not necessarily attributable to having it equate to the $905,000 savings from the forecast. Subsequent activity that we've taken up is Brook Street, which was a $250,000 steep grant. And on Brook Street, we put in not only a new line, but a liner in the old line. And let me explain why we did that. The discovery of three laterals across the brook would have meant that had we done the new line only at a different elevation, those three households would have been required to install pump-up systems. And since we didn't want to put them through the cost of doing that, and the lining in the existing pipe costs less than the pump-up systems, we preserved the old line and we put all the rest of the people on this side of the brook onto the new sewer line. We also did erosion control there. You may recall, looking at that, that over the years, the brook had eroded and was going in underneath not only the sewer line, but the street as well. So that was rip-grabbed and cemented, and it's held up very well from the high waters from this year as well. We also regraded and repaved Brook Street, and the neighbors appreciated that because it meant that the water now drained away from their houses instead of to their houses. Just a little technique called opposite the grade slope.
Yep.
We have been working on Main Street. That project has been interrupted by the fact that there are, or was, an emergency repair about eight weeks ago, where we had sewage flowing into the street. And so, we asked if we could use some of the grant funds to do that work, knowing that it was under our rehab program, but we just hadn't gotten to it before it became an emergency. That's for both, and so it was the WPCA had to take that out of their active funds in order to be able to correct that emergency situation. We have in progress there surveying work which is just completed. There's gonna be a slight addendum to that because there's been the discovery of two-man holes in 44 that were paved over, and there'll have to be arrangements made to gain access to those. We have the engineering design basically completed, and have a pre-budget figure for the work to be done out here. And we will be probably releasing that bid on an additive basis, meaning that we think we have more work than we have money. On Main Street, we had a steep grant that came in at 150,000, and we brought in Brook Street under budget, as shown above there, by $50,800, and the state recognized our request to carry forward that surplus and use it on Main Street. So we'd completed our dye testing, for those of you who were in town.
Friday?
Friday. And saw the idiots with the vests on and walking in the middle of the street pouring dye in manholes. We will be doing some test borings just to ensure that we don't encounter something in the construction that's going to add wildly to the cost, and we'll probably be putting out that project to bid in the February timeframe. We're way behind schedule on that, any number of reasons for it, but with the new administration, this grant also had to be reapplied for, since they threw out all the old grant underwriting. We're also working on what's known as a Central Avenue and Bridge Street project. That is for traffic management and expanded parking options. We have a recommendation from our engineering firm concerning that, and they're doing a conceptual drawing to bring back for discussion with the immediate property owners on the area of Central Bridge and Main Street. That is a pending grant through DECD. You may be in a position to update us in terms of what the status is on that perhaps more than we can. But it is that that grant has had some legs on it. It started off, I believe, it was for remediation across the river at the Town Garage. It got turned into a grant to do the salt shed, and then there was surplus to the salt shed, which we're now trying to turn into a grant for traffic control and parking.
And had been proposed to do a riverwalk, too, underneath the Route 219 bridge to Calhoun. But I think it's a worthy pursuit. You said that your Main Street project was interrupted, just for the record, the emergency was at, what, 557 Main Street?
Yes, beginning at 557.
And that was a $10,000 repair, right?
Re-rooting down to 511, uh, five, excuse me, 551.
That's unfortunate, they wouldn't allow us to use these grant funds for that, because obviously that's what we're trying to cure right here, but the rules are the rules. Okay.
By the way, we elected to bring that project into the sidewalk as opposed to the state highway, because in the remaining work to be done, we will also be transferring the sewers into the sidewalk where possible. The condition of the sidewalk on Main Street was such that it probably would have had to been replaced near-term. It is that there's a lot of difference in the state's mind between working in a sidewalk, even though it's still in their right-of-way, and working in the middle of the street. And the other thing is that even if you enter the state highway and don't extend out beyond the fog line, the new regulations as of July say that you're responsible for repaving up to the center line of the brook, which could be a very costly effort. So, we're responsible for the replacement of the sidewalks in any event as a town, so it made sense to step over there. When we go with the next segment of work, we will also be coming down the sidewalk in front of the post office, and as far as we can towards this area directly across where the farm stand is tying into that manhole. With regard to future planning or projects under review, the Board of Selectment has submitted a grant application for the industrial park cottage street line, and it is the intention to use those monies, plus the surplus cash on hand, which we have, I believe verbal approval from the feds to use that money on the sewer line, and, I'm sorry.
To make application. Now, we have this co-application, so we're waiting for the first approval to come from the state, then we go and say, hey, we've got approval for X amount of dollars from the steep grant. Here comes our formal application.
I tend to think of it as being very positive, knowing we have their money in our bank account.
This is true.
And they don't know how to apply to get it back out, apparently.
I think they're being patient with us.
And then, I'd like to set the stage for us to come back in January to discuss the future clean and wastewater operations. We're still doing a little bit of homework on that, but as we go through the discovery process on the rehabilitation projects that we're working on, we're getting a lot pool of information, and I think it's information that we have to take to heart with regard to what we need to do next and why it's important to do that. So, we should be ready for your next meeting, which I believe would be in January, third week in January.
You're gonna be prepared to make a recommendation to the board, or to start?
We'll have some suggestions.
Initiate a study?
We'll have some suggestions.
Okay. Do you wanna take some time and show us what you just outlined? Obviously, I've been made aware, but just for the people here, you wanna take a little time and just do a little illustration on the map? I know that Jack can't see it, but I can, we can bring Jack up to speed when he comes back.
I think we could probably use this one up here.
Well, these are, whatever you wanna do. Just so.
This is a little bit smaller, but it encompasses the whole area. This area back here is approximately where 557 Main Street is, and that's where there was a failure earlier this fall, and it required the replacement of 170 feet down to this manhole, which was moved into the sidewalk area out of the state highway. The actual blockage that was causing the problem here was, in all likelihood, under the road of 44.
Further to the west?
Yes.
So you rerouted and made the flow go in the opposite direction?
We took elevations here and determined that, you know what flows downhill, and we had the elevation to be able to do that. That allowed us to tie in from this manhole over here and across 44 where there was already working line. Now, the part that we currently have under study goes from here to the intersection of Church Street North, and then this section of Main Street from 535 over here to the corner, which is 529 Main. And this is the area in here and up on Church Street North that we dye tested. Because what we are proposing to do is to relieve some of the flow that currently goes across 44 and across here, because it's in such deplorable condition, by taking and picking up the flow here and bringing it across to this manhole, which then goes across right here in front of Town Hall, and then goes down here and goes into what's called the river line, and then shoots down to the plant. That pretty much covers the area of the sewer line operation. What we wanted to ensure, and there were a couple of surprises in this, that we wouldn't be rerouting something and cut somebody off. Important to know where the flow is coming from and where it's going. There's a manhole right out here, and we assumed that this corner building would connect over here, it did not, it connects down here on Main Street. So, that's some information. We confirmed the corner house goes down through here, confirmed that the church, and church here, and Rogers Swamp from here go down through, and we also confirmed that the corner building comes out here and goes across, all of them coming across over here at the manhole 18. That's a situation as well, which is kinda precarious, because this starts off here where there's about 15 or 18 inches of corrugated pipe. It steps down to 12 inches, it steps down to six inches, and it's going the wrong direction, folks. It's like a funnel, and it should be, but the funnel is turned around the other way with it getting bigger as it goes. This goes from big to small. This has been the occasion here on this corner, because it takes a right angle here and another right angle here.
It's been a troubled spot for you.
Where in the past, at least on an annual basis, it calls for them to bring in the pressure truck and blow the line clean. So that's one, that was our, it's our motivation. It's more of a holding tactic than it is a fix, but then it's a lot less cost to do it this way as well. Now, the parking project, and I don't wanna get too far down the road on that, because we're simply in the planning stages, suffice it to say that this piece of property here has been discussed as an easement by the library for the opportunity to put parking here. We've also, with the surveying work that was completed, have looked at the occasion where we might be able to, with some remediation for the drainage here, come back into this area and expand the church parking lot. And with that, we talked about various traffic routings that could possibly take place, but that's still in a defining state. And then, of course, we're not talking anything about the industrial park at this point, because that's very preliminary, but we just held an informational session with you and with the engineers to talk about that.
Great. Thanks, Bud. Alicia, do you have any questions?
No, he did a very good explanation.
Jack, did you follow that? I know you can't see it, but...
I followed it very well, and I just, the only thing I missed was the name of the speaker.
That was Denton Butler.
Very good.
Okay? And there's surveys here that you can get a copy of that illustrate all of this.
No, I understand that, and I will look that, and I saw, physically saw the survey going on, so I saw that they were, you know, doing that work.
Well, these guys definitely put a lot of time for the town. I appreciate it, and look forward to you guys coming back. Our thanks to Mike and Kenny also. You guys do a great service for the town, so look forward to seeing you in January, weather permitting. And we'll talk about some other issues, and maybe we'll have some information on that steep grant application also, which will give us some guidance.
Now, I'd love to stay for the rest of your meeting, but I have an engagement and stuff.
Fantastic. Well, thanks.
Thanks, Denton.
Roy, did you have anything to add?
Also.
Okay. Moving on, we have our operations update. The majority of the work going on right now in town is the continued storm cleanup, which is front and center. We have, you know, chipping. It seems like not a day goes on that that one old chipper that we have runs. It was running again today. CLMP did give the town as some sort of compensation, five days of services from Lewis Tree. So, suffice to say that we spent the day tracking them down. We developed a list. We've been getting phone calls about, you know, not only the phone ringing off the hook for, when are you gonna come to my house and clear, and clean my yard, which we've had to be the bearer of bad news, that we're not doing yard cleanup or yard waste disposal, just debris removal from material generated from the town right-of-way. But also for hangers, you know, these branches that are broken high up. You know, you drive down, it seems like every street in town, there's a broken branch. You have the guy gets up there in the bucket, he climbs it, it looks fine. You walk down the street 100 feet, you turn the other way, and what you thought was clear, there's another one. I mean, they could be there, we could've used 50 days. That's all I told him. The five days turned into seven or eight, because they did partial days. One day, a guy went home with, you know, a stiff neck or something, and another day they had a machinery issue or something, but they, we did track them down, we got a good portion of our list down, but suffice to say that I think tree work is a budgetary issue going forward, that we'll be dealing with for next year. I think we still have about 4,000 bucks in our tree line item, and, I mean, we could spend it in a couple days. It could be gone. So, anyway, suffice to say that's going on. We did a little bit of drainage work, we did a catch basin up on South Road, and we also did some, the last of our apron replacement removals. The last remaining asphalt plant, Tilcon, in New Britain actually closed its doors today at 5 o'clock for the season, so we were able to actually get our last truckload of pavement yesterday, and did a little bit of driveway work and hot patch replacement on the last day. We usually buy from ONG in Torrington just for the proximity, and sometimes from Glasso, but they took the ride out to New Britain and got a little bit of more pavement and did that. That said, the Field House roof project is continuing. The guys, I bought some pictures, Jack, save your copy when we have it just for everybody. See, the engineer trusses being placed on the building to raise the pitch of the roof as we described throughout the budget process, and now, as of today, the back of the building looks like this, the new sheathing is almost all the way up. So, it's coming along, we look forward. I would say it's probably, I don't know, 30 to 40 percent complete. Their goal was to try to get, you know, the plywood up and done by the end of the day, but, I don't know, when I was up there this morning, you know, 10, 11 o'clock, they were still placing the last truss in, so we'll check on it tomorrow and see how it goes.
What was the cost of all these things?
Rough was 38,500. The town paid an additional, about $4,000 in engineering on the project, so we're at about 42,500. While we talked about it as a re-roof, it was more of a reconstruction of the structure, the roof structure, but I'd be glad to show that to you at any time. We also had Canton Village Construction in and Hemlock Construction in to discuss drainage needs over for the next budget cycle. Doug Spencer, our foreman, has made me aware of, you know, another project on Woodchuck Lane, where we have, I believe, a 36 or 40-inch concrete pipe that is failing that he fears may collapse. So, we have gotten bids coming in on that. You know, obviously, due to the storm remediation, we have not had the opportunity to go dig this job up. It's a big job for our size crew to handle, and with the number of catch basins that seem to be adding up around here on Livery Pool, Tanglewood, and now our newly approved project on Steel Road, it seems like drainage is coming to the forefront of something that we're gonna need some assistance on, so we had both these firms come in to start giving us some pricing, so that we could go and plan for the future. Have a picture of the deterioration of the pipe, if anybody wants to see, we can pass it around, show you what we're talking about. You know, when you look at it from the street, you know, obviously, it doesn't look like there's anything bad, but when you look at the piping, you can see that it's just completely worn out. We have another issue, Jack, if you recall, Alicia, that we discussed at last month's meeting. I know the last board went forward and kinda deferred, and we had a conversation about the Cedar Lane grant program through the STIP Rural Collector Program. I just wanted to, you know, obviously, this is our first meeting as a new board, and with respect to you guys, wanted to have a brief conversation about that, just to ensure that we were all on the same page. If you recall, the...
I recall, yeah, I recall, yeah.
The discussion? It was...
Yeah, it's on review, you could, but I do recall the discussion.
Well, I'll just give a brief. We had about a 1.1-mile section that we had proposed. We had submitted application to chip seal the entirety, which is almost three miles, and we do chip seal around here for about $30,000 a mile, when you include all the underlayment to level. And so, we thought it'd be, you know, $100 to $150,000, and we'd put in 20 percent, and that would be, you know, $25,000 or $30,000 out of the town's road budget, and that would be manageable. Well, the town, or the state crew has gotten involved, and they believe that Cedar Lane, which by any standard is a middle-of-the-road condition-wise roadway in New Hartford, they believe it needs $472,000 worth of infrastructure upgrades, and the state, or the town share would be $89,400. Well, I mean, that's ridiculous on the face of it, because we overlay most roads in town. I mean, we just did Whipbeck Road for $90,000, you know, for 1.1 miles. We did, you know, an overlay of the whole road, not a chip seal. But I just wanted to make sure, you know, we don't want them spending too much time trying to engineer this project if ultimately, we're not gonna go forward. So, I don't know that we can afford to place that type of funding behind a road that's in pretty fair condition, considering when there are other roads that are more worthy. If the estimate was lower, and the town's participation rate, you know, perhaps were lower, so that we had it in similar to the $25,000 or $30,000 I could see going forward, but, you know, I could think just around the corner, Maple Hollow could use the money much more greatly, Tanglewood could use it, Ramstein could use it. You know, I just don't know that we can afford to go through with this, because on the surface, I mean, even this, they say 472,000. We know we have a bid in hand to completely pulverize Steel Road for 1.1 miles for $225,000. So, what are they doing, I don't know what their bids are including, that makes them think that we need to, you know, do full-depth reclamation to state standards and then chip seal it for 472,000. It just seems totally unrealistic and not worthwhile to pursue. You guys have any thoughts?
Well, I agree with you. I mean, you know, $90,000 for us to pay for one mile on a part of a road that is not in a deteriorated shape, doesn't make sense at all.
Yeah. Jack, your thoughts?
I agree as well.
Okay. Well, without any objection, what I'll do is I will send them a letter, a request to withdraw our grant application based on the cost estimates, and I will include the sufficient reasoning of the bids that we have in-house that show full-depth reclamation. You know, and granted, these are prevailing wage jobs, we know that they cost a little bit more, but, you know, this is just, it's more than twice what Steel Road is estimated to cost. I mean, that's, it's just shocking to me.
So now, this money goes back into the pot for another town to try to sell a project on, and that, maybe that's why they don't want the money.
You're right. This poll program is supposed to be to preserve town roads.
Yeah.
Not to make town roads state highways.
Right.
That's the thing that just bothers me the most. But, you know, we're caught in the predicament. We've done a little bit of engineering work on this, and a little bit of core testing, just like Bud was talking about, and I think if we have 1,500 or 2,000 into it, that'd be a lot, but I can't see putting any more money into it if we don't have a strong feeling that we wanna pursue it.
No, there's other roads that that could be used for.
Okay. Jack, any last thoughts on that?
I'm leaving now at this time.
Okay.
No.
All right, so I'll start putting together a letter.
So, I concur with both of you, dear.
Thanks. Last thing, I just wanted to give everybody a little bit of update on storm damage costs to the town as we go forward. We have, I got a call from a reporter tonight that was working on a story, Registered Citizen, and we're asking about, you know, our thoughts about how we're making it through the winter. Obviously, December's been unseasonably warm, and they asked about, you know, what do the storms Irene and Alfred mean to the town? And I said, well, I said, just off the top of my head, you know, we paid $30,000 to put our unpaved roads back together, and Whipbeck Road, and we had the lost opportunity of one to two weeks of town crew time when they were doing all this work. Alfred, on the other hand, which seemed to be the greater storm, the damage really took place on CLMP infrastructure, and we lost about 10,000 in debris removal, I think it was 9,500. But the lost opportunity in terms of town crew time is now going on six weeks with the chipper. So, you know, there was, obviously, we had to table paving, livery pool, and we've lost a lot of opportunities to do... And we've lost a lot of opportunities to do prep and, and get machinery stowed and get the fieldhouse ready to get the lawn mowers in and the street sweeper up there. And there's just been, you know, a focus on, you know, two to three guys, you know, two to three days a week doing chipping, chipping, chipping. And that means that they weren't out filling potholes or cleaning catch basins or doing things that they would normally be doing this year in terms of, of doing storm prep or changing blades on, out on plows and getting things ready. And it's, uh, you know, really gonna push us off a little bit in terms of the lost opportunities of, of even if we were just doing regular tree work, you know, and having a contractor and following around, just cleaning up this brush is, uh, taking a lot of time. So just wanted to do that. And obviously the, the administrative side of it, Annie has got now two FEMA applications to complete. They are time-consuming and, uh, she's working on the first one for Irene. And we're still waiting with those guys and the Alfred thing hasn't even really started yet. So working on it.
Yeah, if I, if, if, uh, if I make some, may say something, uh...
Sure.
...Jack, thank you. Relationship for the hangers, you know, that, uh, you know, that was contacted by a couple of town residents about the trail of the Brody Park South where there's a couple of hangers on the trail. And then there's a couple of trees that are actually blocking the trail. So I don't know whether that's, you know, whether, with, uh, I just wanted to put that on the record as people, whether it was the, you know, Regio Seven, you know, the Dagbo or, or the town or someone could just walk down that trail. But those hangers, you know, six months from now and, you know, windy day, you know, those hangers can be, you know, there, there, there's sleepers out there, you know, that could actually really, 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 really bad to somebody. It's not one record to see if you could, uh, you know, see if you could have some of the town crew walk that trail because that, that, that storm, it's just that maybe an hour or so of chainsaw, someone could, could clear it up.
Well, if they're hangers and they can, and they're reachable, that's one thing. But if they're hangers and they require a climber, our guys do not...
They're, they're low, they're low.
Okay. The, I could definitely check in. Like I say, we've, we've just spent the last, uh, you know, a week and a half doing hangers throughout the road system. And, and we could have done, we could be doing it for the next two or three weeks. They're still all over the place. But point is taken and I will ask, uh...
Yeah, it just sounds like one...
Doug to take a look at it.
You know, someone brought my attention and I know that's happened in the past. And, you know, fifteen is done worth of it and, you know, it gets fixed pretty quickly. It's just, like you say, there's not as much use of the trail right now. But, you know, come springtime, you know, it's, 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 it's... For absolutely people using the trail, it's, you know, there are some, it's, it's, there's one area where the trail is totally blocked by, by a tree that come down, you know, that's from the storm. And then there's two other locations where, you know, the anger could just be mitigated substantially without any climbing or bumper trucks, et cetera.
Okay. The, uh, that's fine. We'll have them take a look at it. Appreciate it.
Okay, great, thank you.
The, uh, the last thing, obviously, which we're gonna discuss on number six is, uh, animal control. And I know we have one of our law enforcement animal control officers here, Dan. Appreciate you coming. One of the things that the region is looking at is a regional animal control facility. Uh, I've gone and participated in these meetings with these folks to see, you know, what they think the, the costs associated with these things are. I basically told them that we have a very attractive system in terms of the way we run it in New Hartford. And I don't know that they could beat our system, but we're willing to, you know, study and see what they, they can come up with. I think that if you're talking about, uh, money for a facility in Torrington or, or possibly some type of agreement in Harmington, that would be all well and good. But the operational control, uh, you know, could become an administrative nightmare if it's gonna be staffed by multiple guys and how it's gonna go on. The, the system that we have now with Canine Depot is just, uh, a pretty attractive system. And we operate it at, uh, just around three bucks per capita, you know, twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars a year, I think it is. And, uh, you know, so while we've been having these meetings, we're talking about several other things in terms of, uh, the Public Works Cooperative and, uh, the composting. Seems like we've been having a lot of meetings on these things. So, uh, just an update of what's going on. Budget prep is starting to come into the forefront. Alicia and I have been, uh, starting to work on some capital requests. And like I just said, we've been having some contractors come in to look at some jobs in ter, in terms of drainage. We've also been participating with, uh, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. This, what they call SEDS with, uh, members of the Litchfield Hills Cooperative and some other folks over in Torrington, trying to update our Comprehensive Economic Development Plan. Ski Sundown opened on Saturday. I guess they got, uh, the left side of the mountain open up and they're, they're ready for business. And of course, we had first weekend in, in December, we had our holiday, uh, events. Light New Hartford, the Bakerville Tree Lighting and Breakfast with Santa. Breakfast with Santa, those guys, uh, the Women's Club is, uh, highly successful like none other over, what was it, seven hundred breakfasts?
It was about that. I, I had, when I stopped counting, it was sixty-eight hundred. And so there was probably...
Six hundred and eighty.
Yeah. No, there was six, seven thousand, six hundred and eighty. So...
Amazing.
It is amazing because I know a few years ago it was, they were only doing like five hundred. So that was only a few years ago. So now they're doing up to seven hundred.
Yeah. And I tell you, it stresses the system. You can't get in and out of that place. But, uh, and Light New Hartford in town here was, uh, also very well attended. I know that, uh, the popcorn supply that we did at Town Hall lasted about an hour and I did fifty percent more than last year and it just went, it was, the kids ate it up in a heartbeat and took it. So, uh, again, hats off to the volunteers, the Women's Club for doing, uh, you know, Breakfast with Santa, Dawn Whalen and, and everybody, the volunteers, you know, that do Light New Hartford is wonderful. And, uh, the Bakerville Library and Neil Yates for offering up his property for the Bakerville Tree Lighting. Very nice to see that type of spirit in town. Just really phenomenal. I think the weekend weather and the mild temperature just, uh, really made it all a success. So, uh, those are the updates. The last thing I wanted to add is, uh, a memorial note to Don Fern. Longtime New Hartford resident, uh, military veteran, Navy, uh, VFW member, American Legion. Chris, Pine Meadow firefighter, coach to so many kids in town, father of seven. And, uh, all I can say about Don Fern is he was a legend in this town. Everybody knew him. Big, big Hulk of a guy, uh, great family. I grew up with two of his boys, uh, Steve and Brian. And when, uh, Brian eulogized him and started saying some of his Don sayings, you know, it gives you a chill and a flashback, you know? I could just remember him down at the field, little bingo babe on the sideline, this big Hulk walking down. So, uh, the town will miss Don and note that his tremendous service to the community is greatly missed. And our condolences to Jenny, his, his wife. So, and his family. So, uh, with that, any questions on, uh, operations updates?
No.
No? Jack, any questions?
Bill, Bill, Bill first. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the Route 219 Johnny Cake Lane DOT project update. We got a call from Don...
Dave Harms.
Dave Harms from DOT. DOT has been working on the Route 219 project for what seems like forever. And, uh, they called to notify us of their desire to cancel the project. It seems like they've done just about everything but build the project. They've done the engineering work. They've actually done land acquisition. They have done nearly everything. And they called, uh, my office for our opinion on whether or not we thought the project should be canceled. And, uh, I told them that I would bring it to this board to discuss. As we know, there was a, a little bit of straightening that was gonna go on, a little bit of grade change up by Berdick's. They were gonna bring the top of the hill down a little bit at John and Donna Berdick's house. And, uh, my initial reaction to this was that, jeez, you're so close. Why do you wanna cancel it? And his response was, we just don't have the money to do the project. And I said, well, if you don't have the money and this is just an economic reality of, of two thousand and eleven, then why not just table it and understand that you've got so much time and energy and money into the project that you'll consider it at a time when you have the funds to do it, like any other, you know, town or for that matter, any household, you know? I mean, sometimes the, uh, the fiscal realities of the economy make you, you know, put things off today that you would wanna do just because you just don't have the money. So I thought that I'd bring it to you guys and, and get your opinion is that, uh, you know, how you felt about it. I know that we're having a brief one. If you wanted to take some time to think about it, you're not prepared to, to chime in or whatever. But my tendency is that we write them a letter to say that we favor tabling the project rather than a permanent cancellation.
Did, did the town have to vote on, on that project at all? So I don't, I haven't been around that long involving town managers.
There was public informational meetings held, but there hasn't been any actual funds from the town put into it. So...
So pure state project.
It was, it was pure design and concept stage. It never got, and planning, it never got to actual, um...
Was there any opposition from the town, from any town residents to do it?
No, there was, there was, there was some concern that the project wasn't, um, broad enough in scope. The people were talking about a hump in the road and so they were asking to include removing of a hump. And I think that was near like the old Heath property. So there was a lot of discussion as to how to, um, modify the project, but there was never any real opposition to the project.
Do they have a current estimate of, uh, price that they're looking at, what it would cost, why they can't afford it?
He did, he didn't give me a number.
Yeah.
He just said they, they just don't have the funds to do it and there are other projects that they feel are more worthy. You know, their tendency was to, to cancel. So, jeez.
Well, you know, administration...
I hadn't heard anything about it a long time.
Administration's come and go and I wouldn't wanna see the, the project canceled. I would wanna hope for maybe the next administration would say, you know, let's go ahead and do it. I'm not talking about your administration, I'm talking about the administration.
I didn't see them coming in doing it. I mean, they just repaved the road.
Yeah.
So I, I didn't see them coming in to redo it anyway. Of course, what he says is that, you know, infrastructure upgrades and maintenance sometimes collide anyway. So even though they repaved it, if they had the money, they might go back and redo it. But, uh, I, I think we just table. I mean, I don't know that we have the ability to control what their ultimate decision is, but I think...
Right.
...in terms of the town.
I would say that, yeah, put that in the letter that it's something that the town has always thought was going to happen and has been waiting for it to happen and they would like to see it happen. We, we know, have no opposition to the project.
I get calls from, uh, Johnny Cake Lane families that don't like the way Johnny Cake Lane comes down.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's terrible.
And they were looking for improvements, but, you know, on a day-to-day basis, I don't get a lot of calls. I don't know that I've had really anybody call, you know, with a complaint about that. There's other things. I get more complaints about Central Avenue and the narrowness and the parking there or things like that. But in terms of that, I, I don't get calls on it. So... Jack, do you have any opposition to send them a letter to say table instead of cancel?
Absolutely not. I would, I would say, you know, I'd be in favor of sending a letter and asking them to table it. And, you know, in the event that, uh, you know, the, the money becomes available, it sounds like it would, you know, it would be good for the town to have the road approved. You know, it would be good for the property owners and the residents that live on the road and the users of the road. So I'd be in favor of, you know, sending them a letter asking them to table it. And then, you know, you're, you're interested in projects that the money become available in the future.
So you making a motion, Jack?
Yes.
Sounds good. You gonna second that, Alicia?
I'll second it.
All in favor, send, uh, David Harms, DOT, uh, letter favoring tabling instead of canceling, signified by Saint I?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Show that as unanimous. Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the Litchfield Hills Business Energy Efficiency Program, the so-called BEEP Grant. Uh, just wanted to let everybody know the BEEP Grant is for local business owners to do, uh, improvements to their properties. It was saddled with, uh, low reimbursement rates and By America provision. Due to the lack of, uh, interest in the program, they have taken off some of the restrictions and made it a little bit more user-friendly. We just wanna get the information out to local businesses to, perhaps they might reconsider. I think there's still in excess of a hundred thousand dollars available for our region, including the Litchfield Hills area, for people that want to apply. And if they do have it, uh, interest, they should come to Town Hall and see Christie. And I could give a little bit more of a rundown on what's included and what's not. It's a staggered system where you...
What is the business participation percentage for that program, for what you guys thought?
In New Hartford, we only, we've only had, uh, we've only had one person look into it. We've had little to no interest in going after it. We had the Alcove talked about it a little bit, but nobody filled out an application and actually went forward, did they? Up Country did this round?
Interested, interested.
No, I meant, no, you mentioned a little. And that, if a business was to get involved with receiving the funds, how, what percentage of the funds that, that they get from the grant, does the business have to match, if any?
It, it's a stagger. The, you know, the first ten thousand receives one ratio and then the second and it goes on from there. I'd have to, you'd have to come in. I'd get you the thing from, uh, through the Litchfield Hills.
Get the information. Maybe there's, you know, a member of the New Hartford Business Council that could benefit from it.
Right. And I could forward that information onto Dawn to let people know for their next meeting. I know that Dawn is stepping aside, but she may hang around for another meeting until they find a new president. But, uh, anyway, just changing out and taking off the By America provision and, uh, increasing the eligibility of some of the expenses will be helpful. Next item on the agenda, we have the, uh, Regional Performance Incentive, uh, Program Applications. As I said earlier, the Litchfield Hills Council of Elected Officials is submitting grant applications for three separate items, all of which include, the first one is the Regional Animal Control Facility. The proposal on the table now is for renovation and/or expansion of the Torrington Animal Control Facility down in the southern side of Torrington. Actually, I think there's actually in Harmington. But, uh, they're talking about doing a study to see what it would take to, uh, improve the animal control facility. I think the grant is for thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars, thirty thousand for the grant, five thousand for administration. The Public Works Equipment Cooperative, we have the two street sweepers right now and the, uh, the sewer sucker. And now they're looking to increase that and to get some paving equipment so that towns could use, uh, a paving box and I believe a roller. And then the Regional Composting Facility is something that I, I don't know that we have a lot of use for it here, but they're looking for large commercial users to give them an opportunity, like hospitals and restaurants and things like that that have a large quantity of food or organic materials. They're looking to have a, a composting facility where they could take large quantities of compost that might not be our landfill. They're trying to take that out of the landfill mix or the transfer station mix. So, uh, as I said earlier, I've been participating in the meetings for animal control. I don't oppose the research end of it. And I think that this, you know, obviously knowledge is power. They submit their information and we learn and learn and learn. But, uh, I don't know that they could ever, uh, beat the system that we have here in New Hartford. And, uh, you know, that said, you know, if they wanna study it, that's fine. We have made no formal commitment for, to New Hartford to permanently go into any type of shared arrangement with anybody. The Public Works Equipment Cooperative has never cost us a dime. You know, obviously the, the two street sweepers that, uh, are shared. And if we wanna use them, we actually pay a rental fee of like fifty-five or sixty-five dollars an hour that they're used. So there's cost there, but they're there when you need them. And the, the composting facility, I don't know that we have a, a need for it locally, but I don't oppose it. Does anybody have any questions about, you know, the impact of us supporting the initiatives or any concerns?
Well, you know, like you've said before, it doesn't hurt to listen to the animal control initiative. But like you said, it probably won't be in our favor to be a part of that.
Canine Depot is just too easy.
Right.
And we have, Dan, you're, you're one of our animal control officers. I mean, do you have any input on it?
No, except that I think we're running pretty smoothly right now. And, uh, I'm not on a salary. I'm paid by the hour. And if you got somebody else in, it would be, uh, a regular full-time job that, and I'm not sure what... and I'm not sure what the New Hartford part of that would be. But I don't think they're going to get it any cheaper as far as payment goes.
I've made them fully aware of that.
And I've been involved with Canine Depot long enough that I've been into other facilities. And she is the cheapest there is around for boarding and, you know, just everyday care basically of the animals. And I think she does a nice job.
Yeah.
I mean, I've had people that did not like it down there because they said it was dirty. Well, when you have a dog in a cage and they're going on the floor and you're cleaning it three or four times a day, you walk in and it might be dirt on the floor or, you know, poop on the floor at any given time. Because you've been cleaning it and three minutes later, it can be there. So, you know.
It's just a reality of the business.
Reality, right. And I think basically I have no complaints about it at all.
Yeah, I, that's what I told him. I said, look, it's pretty hard to beat when you have a fee-for-service enterprise right in your downtown main commercial area. I mean, to even drive, we're closer than a lot of the communities that would participate in a, in a facility if it were to end up in southern Torrington. You know, you're talking about Goshen or Colbrook or Norfolk or Heartland, all talking about this thing. And.
With two people running it. And I mean, usually if I get a call, I'm on my way within 15 or 20 minutes. If you called somebody in Torrington and they were in Canaan, how long was it going to take to get there? And I mean, we do have serious situations now and then with dog bites or anything else. That, you know, they should be looked into immediately, not in 10 or 12 hours, you know, so.
No, I agree. I've made this all clear to them. And frankly, when it comes in, they analyze, there's two components, you know? It's, it's the facility and then it's the service. And I said, you know, private enterprise, you know, fee for service. Yeah, we're doing both aspects for $3 per capita. 20, $21,000 a year. I mean, that's just hard to beat. You know, even if the state were to pay for a full facility down there, I don't know that they can compete at that level.
And I don't want to lose my job either.
We like what you're doing, Dan.
I don't.
Me.
I'd just like to comment too, from the residents' point of view. The fact that they get a pretty quick response. A lot of times the guys get calls that someone has a stray dog.
Right.
And they need somebody to come and pick it up. And a lot of people don't have the facility to take in another dog. Or if they have a dog of their own, they don't want to bring in this strange dog. And, you know, if, if they had to wait five hours till somebody showed up to pick up this dog, chances are maybe they wouldn't keep the dog and the dog would still be roaming around or something. So I think from a resident's point of view, a fairly quick response is really to their benefit. And it helps get the dogs back home faster.
Well, as I said, I don't think there's any harm in researching any of these type of things. But when the practical reality comes into, you know, what can you implement? And what can't you implement? You know, I don't know that there's any way that they can beat the status quo. I think the Public Works Cooperative is a slam dunk. You know, to have access, if you can get grant funding to provide additional shared equipment to the 10 towns, you know, that, that share them, I think that's great. The composting thing, I don't, I don't oppose it. You know, if they, if there's a need out there for, for excess composting, for say the hospital or, you know, things like that, then, you know, fine. I don't have any complaints. They, their request specifically to us is an endorsement of all three grant program applications. Would anybody like to make a wholesale motion or?
Well, what's that consist of? Just for them, they're not, they're not looking for any money at this point from us?
There's, there's no financial.
For no studies or anything like that?
No, these are all grant applications to study.
Okay.
Okay? There, there's no financial link to the town, a requirement of participation at all from our, from our community. It's just right now we are in as an interested member. That's all.
Sure, I'll make the motion to endorse.
The Regional Performance Incentive Grant Program Applications.
Yeah, what he said.
Jack, you want to second that?
Yes, sweet. I second.
Any further discussion or are we going to vote?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Show that as unanimous. Great. Okay. Appointments to Boards and Commissions, next on our list. As we all know, at the first term, we go through all of our appointments. So we're going to just go through right off the top. If you want to start, the first expiring term to be renominated, Steve Hamright on WPCA. Steve's a great guy. I know him well. I go to a number of their meetings. He's been on for a couple of years now. Anybody want to nominate Steve for reappointment?
I nominate Steve for reappointment to the WPCA for the term January 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2014.
I would second that.
All right, let's go, let's just expedite these. If anybody has any discussion or anything, we'll move forward. But all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Commission on Aging, we have Pat Petrella and Linda Sheffield with expiring terms. So they have, anybody want to make a nomination to reappoint Pat Petrella and Linda Sheffield?
I nominate, I make a motion to nominate Pat and Linda both for the Commission on Aging for their respective terms of January 2012 through December 31st, 2014.
You second that, Jack?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Conservation Commission, we have Allison Murdock. We did have Mike Sikolsky on there, but Mike is unable to serve. He's just got family commitments that are overwhelming. So Allison Murdock is our nominee to serve. And we'll have two vacancies to consider at future meeting. Anybody want to renominate Allison?
I nominate Allison for the Conservation Commission for the term January 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2014.
Jack, you want to second?
Yes, second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Historic District Commission, Sybil Pellem, excuse me. We're going to do these separate because they're too different, right?
Yeah, second one's an.
So full seat, Sybil Pellem. Anybody want to make nomination for Sybil for the Historic District Commission?
I would nominate Sybil Pellem for the Historic District Commission.
Thank you. Alicia, you want to second that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have an alternate, Mary Ann Gunning. Love Mary Ann. Up for an alternate spot on Historic District Commission. Anybody want to make that nomination?
I'll make that nomination for Mary Ann for Historic District Commission for January 2012 through December 2014.
Want to second that, Jack?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have Inland Wetlands, two full seats. Nancy Perez, we, we have three, but I haven't been able to get in touch with one of them for Rob Swanky. And I'm not sure if he's available to fulfill the term. So we're only going to deal with two. We're going to get back on the third. Nancy Schroeder Perez and Lou Mosca Rito. Anybody want to make nomination of Nancy and Lou?
I'll make the nomination for Nancy and Lou for Inland Wetlands Commission, regular term, January 2012 through December 2014.
Want to second that, Jack?
I second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Jack?
Jack, you in favor?
Yes.
Good. The suspense was getting.
No, I thought that.
That's okay, I'm teasing. Okay. Moving forward, our Retirement Board Pension Committee, great group. Kim DiDomenicus has been on there for a long time. She's great. Anybody want to make the motion to reappoint Kim?
I'll make the motion to nominate Kim, the Retirement Board Pension Committee for the term January 2012 through December 2016.
Second, Jack?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Great. Economic Development Commission, David Kremel. Anybody want to make a motion to renominate Dave Kremel to Economic Development?
I would make the motion to renominate Dave Kremel to the Economic Development Commission.
Okay.
For a full term.
Second.
All in favor for Dave?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Open Space, two of our longer-serving members, Madeline McClave and Karen Ross. I haven't spoken to them, but I know they're both interested in continuing. All, or anybody want to make a motion to renominate Madeline and Karen to Open Space?
I'll make the motion to nominate Madeline and Karen for Open Space Preservation Commission for their terms, January 2012 through December 2014.
Jack, you ready to second?
Absolutely, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, we have an alternate on Open Space, Terry Mareschi. Anybody want to make the motion to renominate Terry to an alternate term?
I'll make a motion.
I would make the motion to renominate Terry Mareschi to be.
Open Space.
Open Space Commissioner.
There you go. Alicia, you on second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Recreation Commission, we have four full seats up. John Mashie, our chairman, Maureen Morris, Ed Smith, and Sally O'Neill, all up for renomination. Anybody want to make a motion to renominate John, Maureen, Ed, and Sally?
I would, I would like to make that nominate, make that nomination, make that motion.
Okay, second?
Aye.
Alicia?
Second.
All in favor of renominating John, Maureen, Ed, and Sally? Say aye.
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 Fantastic. And last on our list today, RRDD number one, Regional Refuge Disposal District. Bill Marchand was in today, wants to serve again. Anybody want to renominate Bill for the glorious duty of taking care of the dump for another couple of years?
I'll make, I'll make that motion to nominate Bill Marchand to the Regional Refuge Disposal District for his term.
Okay. All in favor of renominating Bill Marchand? Say aye.
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 Aye. All right, that completes our list of appointments to Boards and Commissions. Thank you. We have another separate appointment that has to go on. We don't have a board of assessors anymore. So every new board has to reappoint our assessor to be the town assessor. We have Elizabeth Paul has been doing it for all the time that I've been here, plus a couple of years beyond that. I think she's in her fourth year. Anybody want to make the motion to reappoint Elizabeth Paul, AKA Beth, downstairs to continue on as our assessor?
I'll make that motion to reappoint Beth as the town assessor.
All right, Jack, you want to second, second Beth? All right, all in favor of reappointing Elizabeth Paul as our assessor? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Fantastic. That completes all of our nominations. We still do have some vacancies to take up. It seems like it's always the case these days, you know, harder and harder to find volunteers, you know, as everybody's trying to make a buck and take care of the family. But we appreciate our volunteers, so we'll move forward. We have the, the meeting schedule. We have the formal meeting schedule here for the remainder of the, or for 2012, which will be the fourth Tuesday of every month. January 24th, February 28th, March 27th, April 24th, May 22nd, June 26th, July 24th, August 28th, September 25th, October 23rd, November 27th, and December 18th. All meetings to be held at 7:00 PM at Town Hall in the Sessions Conference Room. Would anybody like to make a motion to endorse the proposed schedule of regular meetings?
I would, I would make that motion. Endorse the regular meeting schedule as permitted.
Fantastic.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Obviously, there'll be the need to have, as we've been had in the past, additional meetings for budget and things like that. But for regularly scheduled meetings, just remind everybody, whenever we have a special meeting, it limits our ability to modify the agenda. So these are our regular meetings where we can basically discuss whatever we want. We can modify the agenda. All in favor of accepting? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Request for refunds. I have one that you snuck over to us.
No, you got the town holiday, Town Hall holiday schedule.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And Jack, you get these by email, so you have seen them.
Okay. You going to hand that over? Okay. Town Hall holiday schedule. Okay? Any changes from last year, Chris? In concept?
No, same holidays, yeah.
Okay. Holiday closings, I'll read them out for you, Jack, because you're not here.
I have to, because I have to refund, but you can't do that.
Oh, we'll do it. January 16th for Martin Luther King, February 20th for President's Day, April 6th for Good Friday, May 28th for Memorial Day, July 4th for Independence Day, September 3rd for Labor Day, October 8th for Columbus Day, November 12th for Veterans Day, because the holiday's on Sunday. The day before Thanksgiving, we have a noon closing. That's the 21st, the 22nd for Thanksgiving, and the 23rd, the day after Thanksgiving. And then the 25th for Christmas Day. And the note at the bottom says the Town Hall Union employees have a discretionary day that results in one additional closing during this year. And this is the discretionary will no longer be effective 2013. Okay, so the discretionary day is what day?
They choose it.
They choose it, so we don't have that yet?
Right.
Okay.
My guess will be somewhere around Christmas, if you look at the, the way Christmas falls.
I was wondering about, why don't they have a day for the New Year's holiday? There isn't one on the schedule.
I probably missed that one. Did I miss that one?
I don't know. It's, it would be January 2nd is the, is a Monday, because we have that off.
Oh, you know, that goes into next year, 2013. Oh, no, you mean for this year. Oh, I see, 2012, yeah. I think they adapted that last year already, so.
Oh, we missed another day?
Well, we already, we get it off, but this is, yeah. If you want to add that, go ahead. I think you added it last year, to your last year one.
How many holidays do they?
Do I need to go to the contract?
Does the contract call for?
Oh, they get New Year's Day. Absolutely, they get New Year's Day.
How many holiday, okay, because this is only 12 and a half.
13.
So we got to add Monday?
No. And is that 13 day, is that including their discretionary day?
They get discretionary day next year, but not the year after.
Right.
Their contract.
So if they had, say, if they get January 2nd.
All these are the approved holidays.
Then that becomes really 13 and a half days plus a discretionary days. Then they get 14 and a half days.
Yeah, but this is the last year we negotiate discretionary day.
Make sure you're on the same page.
Okay.
The reason that's a difference from the contract is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Okay?
Okay?
Right.
The Wednesday before Thanksgiving is not stipulated in the contract.
Right.
But it's a standard practice to close Town Hall.
Due to trial.
I think a lot of people do that.
Yes, for trial.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're...
And the reason why they've asked to be put on an actual closing schedule is in the past, there have been some administrations who have not let the employees know what time they were getting out the day before Thanksgiving, so this clarifies it for everyone.
They don't let us know. And make this weird.
So we're modifying and we're including Monday, January 2nd, 2012?
Twelve, right.
Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the modified schedule?
I make a motion to approve the modified schedule with all these holidays listed.
Jack, you can get a second?
Yes, second.
All right. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Fantastic. Okay. All right, so we'll pre-put that out and include the missed New Year.
No, this is fine. You added it.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is the request for tax refunds. I have one and you have one.
Right.
Okay, we have two requests from our tax collector, Linda. And they are for, one for real estate, one for car. Seventy-eight dollars and forty-five cents for the car and four hundred and three dollars and twenty cents for the real estate. And reason being, they were adjusted after they were paid.
Can you repeat that number for the four hundred?
Four hundred and three dollars and twenty cents. Okay. It's the practices board for those who don't do it, is that Linda does and calculates the the official request for tax refunds, but we have to sign off and all three of us have to actually sign. So this is something that will be in for you, in with Annie in the business office, Jack, but you gotta come in to do this. When do you get a chance?
I can do it while.
Okay. A motion to approve the request as presented?
Make a motion to approve the request as presented.
I motion that we accept the tax refund as presented.
That motion's already on the floor. You on a second?
I second the motion, I apologize.
There you go, no problem. All in favor of approving the request for refunds? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're unanimous again. And Alicia and I are just gonna sign them right here, which is usually our, has been the practice of our last board. Will happen with all of them.
If anybody know, I'll come in and see you tomorrow.
Yeah?
I'll have them.
Christine will have them, they'll be in the office.
Okay, I'll come and see Christine.
Okay.
Those checks are made by Linda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. You have any comments on agenda items? Next on our agenda, public comment on agenda items. Anybody have any comments on the agenda? Things, items, questions? No?
Actually, after we were talking about the kennel thing, I know when they did the seizure here of the dogs earlier this year, there was, it was kind of an issue of finding places to put them all. So if, in the discussions, if you continue to believe you don't want to join the pound, but you had access in case you had a seizure or something, that might be a handy thing to have locally. Because it did involve our animal control officers going to these other municipalities.
Multiple locations, right?
And that was kind of a little bit of a problem.
Yeah. Well, that type of seizure, I don't know if I've ever heard of anything of that size in the county before.
For us, right.
Mr. Archer has had one. And he's been 18 years, so...
Yeah. I think that the ability to have a larger facility in the area could be of some benefit. Whether or not we tend to be participants remains to be seen. But I think that having Harmington has, what, 10 or 11 runs over there? Something like that?
At least.
So they have a bigger facility.
I think they've got four quarantine kennels too. That, you know, if something is questionable, they can go right into quarantine where they are not accessible by humans. You know, they're fed by pushing the food into them and so forth and so on. So if there's something, you know, with rabies or something like that where the animal is vicious, there are specially built kennels where they're fenced all the way around, cement walls up, I think eight feet or so. And a beautiful, beautiful setup over there. Have you seen it?
I haven't. I haven't been able to see it.
You ought to take a run, I mean, it's not state-of-the-art by any means, but it is a really nice setup. I mean, easy to take care of, very clean, air-conditioned, heated, everything, you know, so it's...
It's better than our town garage?
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, the thing is, you don't have to have the town garage air-conditioned or heated. The dogs have to, according to the state, have to be air-conditioned and heated.
Well, like I said, this is gonna take a little while to unfold. We'll see where it all takes us. I don't know that they can beat the system that we have in place. But we do have some correspondence that came our way over the last few days, one of which I think made the paper. We have a letter from Selectman in Salisbury, Mark A. Loretano, who is a state trooper, now retired, issuing his concerns about a proposed plan of the Department of State, Department of Public Safety to purportedly move the Troop B Services in Canaan to Litchfield. This has been talked about a couple of times. Of course, with our resident trooper program and our constables, we fall into one of the member towns that is servicing, serviced by Troop B. And Selectman Loretano from Salisbury just puts out a number of serious concerns and talks about the fact that this was tried once before in the 70s and didn't work very well. Similar to some of the arguments that Dan was talking about with, and Donna were talking about in terms of the service issue. You know, we obviously have needs that, you know, I think are more dramatically illustrated by the towns that are further up into the hills in the corner of the state that are represented by the troop. We, of course, are one of the furthest towns from the troop. And the troop does propose, it does put out challenges for us in terms of transporting prisoners all the way out to Canaan, all the way up to the Mass line. I'm not a fan of closing the barracks, but in a perfect world, I certainly think it could be located in a different spot. You know, Winston would make a heck of a lot more sense to me. But, you know, I mean, we all know that, you know, sometimes you play the cards that are dealt to you. And right now, the troop is in Canaan and frankly, moving it to Litchfield doesn't offer us any speed of service because it's probably equidistant to here and just as hard to get through. You gotta go all the way through, you know, just like you gotta go through Winston on one side, you gotta go all the way through Torrington on the other to get to the far end of Litchfield to get to the troop down there. I don't know that moving it to Litchfield would help us any, but I think it's something that, it's on file, if you guys wanna read it. He makes a pretty good case for objecting to the proposed move. I tend to agree with a lot of his points and his arguments for not doing it, but...
This was just informative for you, 'cause this is the letter sent to the governor.
Right, he copied, he sent the letter to the governor and he copied all the selections from Barkhamsted, Canaan, Coldbrook, Cornwall, Goshen, Heartland, New Hartford, Norfolk, North Canaan, Salisbury, and Sharon, as well as Mayor Bingham Torrington, was Mayor, Perez in Winston, now Mayor Welcome, and then to Senators Wigcoast and Roraback and Representatives Willis, Rigby, and Samansky. So I'm sure this is being read. I know it's been reported in the newspaper. And it's a source of concern for people to know where these services are gonna be provided out of and and what access the people have to these services. As I said, Canaan's not perfect for us, but I don't know that Litchfield provides us with a superior outcome, so that's there. And then also, town-wide mailing that went out that made me think of Neighbors to Neighbors,[1679.12]